I see her. Commissioner Atkins?
Here.
Commissioner Catherine?
Here.
Commissioner Lazarus?
Here.
And Commissioner Epperson?
Present.
Okay, I'm counting 10 of 12 Commissioners present. Did I miss anybody? All right.
Since this is our first meeting, full meeting, of the new year, even though we just had invocation, I would like to ask Commissioner Pastor Stefan Jones to give us an invocation for the new year, followed by a pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Epperson. Is that all right with both Commissioners? Thank you.
Mr. President, can I ask that we include the Let us pray. God our Father, we thank you for life, for health, and for strength. We thank you for being so gracious and merciful to us to give us another opportunity to see this day. Thank you for bringing us to this new year, to new opportunities. We pray, O God, that we take advantage of every time that you give us to live and to experience a new life, that we would do our very best to represent you. It's our prayer, O God, that you would be pleased with everything that we say and do in this meeting, that we would reason together. We lift those, O God, who are yet bereaved and dealing with the tragedy in New Orleans. O God, we pray that you would continue to bless them and keep them, to give them peace in this time, to continue to bless their leadership. And those who are on the front lines, the first responders, who are continuing to investigate and work through that process, we pray that you would keep them safe and sound as they try to bring this to a closure. Pray, O God, for the parish of Caddo. God, just keep us safe and sound. Pray for our youth, our children. We pray that this year would be the best year ever. This is our prayer, and we pray these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Let's all turn, face the flag, please. I'd like to ask that all military and all veterans render the standard hand to brow salute. All others, right hand across your heart. If you would, please remember our POWs and MIs. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, law.
Thank you Commissioners Jones and Epperson. I believe we have agenda additions.
We do have one agenda addition today. I believe... Ashen, are you able to get that on the screen?
Maybe if we refresh, we can see one.
The agenda addition is from Commissioner... Or the proposed agenda addition is a proposed to add the... To expand the agenda to add, considering advancing a special resolution honoring the other recipients of the Principal of the Year Award. That is from Commissioner Catherine.
Okay, so just so everyone's clear, there are three Principals of the Year for each of the levels of school, and we want to honor all three. So we can... Is there a motion to add this item to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. A motion from Commissioner Catherine, seconded by Commissioner Jones, to add this item to the agenda. If there's no more discussion, we can vote. It must be unanimous to be added to the agenda today.
Oh, I'm sorry, do you need to open a public hearing?
Oh, yes, that's right. And then I'll also, before we vote, open a public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak for or against adding this item to the agenda, please come forward now. Public hearing is open. No one appears. Public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Now we'll vote.
Okay, and that motion carries with 10 in support, none in opposition, and 2 absent. That was a... Just for the record, to make sure that was correct, that was a motion from Commissioner Catherine, seconded by the Chair. Is that correct?
Seconded by Jones.
Seconded by Jones. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Citizens' comments. Do we have any, Mr. Clark?
Oh, we do have one.
Right. Ms. Glover. Ms. John Glover.
Good evening, President of the Commissioners. John Glover, 9100 Walker Road, Apartment 217, Shreveport, Louisiana, 7118. I rise to say Happy New Year to you all. Though business only just took a break, now we're back to business. And we're looking forward to you all handling the business of the parish, the citizens of Caddo Parish. Now, I sent to you all's attention a couple of emails, one of which I asked for an update on the lighthouse projects. We had had some discussion, quite extensive, as to how those projects were going to be funded, whether or not they met or meet the opera requirements, guidelines. We don't know, we didn't know. We do know that, once upon a time, they did not. Now, we were asking too, if such is the case, are we going to be looking for the commission itself to fund those two projects, some $500,000? Then I was looking at an agenda item to advance Resolution 3 of 2025, and it dealt with the Head Start Program. The language in that pro... In that resolution, a lot of it looked duplicate, just used different... You know, you dressed it up to dress it down, and it really wasn't itself for me because it said the same thing twice in Paragraphs 2 and 3. Then I believe in Paragraph 7, it mentioned indigent recipients. And I was trying to figure out, what does an indigent have to do with Head Start Program? And though I was shared, the information was given me saying that these are the requirements or the language that is normally attached there too, the language is misleading, and I think that such should be addressed. If it is that in Paragraphs 2 and 3, where you're talking about specifics of children ages 2 to 3, families, parents, or whatever, then Paragraph 4 says the same thing, just using different words. So we have to be mindful, because we do read these agendas, and we do read the legislation. And we do want to make sure that whatever we're funding as a citizen of this parish, that it is in the best interest of all of us, but with the language addressing exactly what it says. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glover. That's all our citizens' comments for today. Now we'll have... We have no visitors, is that correct?
It is correct.
None are listed, so I'll go on to Reports Administrator... Administrator Bryant. Happy New Year.
Good afternoon Commissioners. Happy New Year to each of you. We are looking forward to a wonderful 2025. We first want to just give you an update. We are monitoring the weather situation. We are preparing the necessary material for our roads and bridges. Should we have ice or snow accumulation, we will work with the state to help keep I-220 open, should we have any issues there. Communication is disseminating information to our citizens about how to prepare for this winter weather, and also if there are any closures or anything of that nature, we will be communicating as we get more specific information. But we are in communications with both the state as well as Homeland Security in order to prepare what we're expecting, an event maybe Thursday to Friday. Your juvenile detention numbers, we have 13 in detention, 1 17-year-old, 1 OJJ, 22 CCC, 472 probation cases. That concludes the Administration report, and we'll take any questions.
Thank you Administrator Bryant. Could you give us also an update on how things are going at Animal Services in the cold weather?
Yes, sir. We are making... We'll allow Mr. Clark to come forward and give you an update on how we prepare. We do know that it's imperative of us to be prepared for our animals when they are in our shelter during cold weather.
Welcome Director Clark.
How y'all doing? This year, just as well as last year, what we try to do is get a lot of the dogs that have been placed outside into fosters. Sometimes people come and foster animals that are already within the facility that opens up kennel space so we can get more animals inside. I think we have close to nine animals left, but the animals that are out do have access to dry bedding and things of that nature. They're not just on concrete. I know two of them are Great Pyrenees. One of them is a Big Shepherd, so you know, those are animals that can handle, you know, lower temperatures, but we are trying to get more of them in foster.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to speak to you afterward about those Great Pyrenees. I also have a Great Pyrenees, and he does not know what cold feels like.
Exactly.
Go ahead, Commissioner Catherine.
With the foster program, what does a citizen need to do if they do have the space or the opportunity to actually foster a dog? Because I saw that, I think at one point you had 10 that you were trying to get out of the cold, and you say at 9, I guess, so 9? And I know you're getting dogs in every day.
Yeah, we get new animals in, so right now, I think it's 9 is the count. They would just need to come down and complete a foster agreement, provide their ID, live within the confines of Caddo Parish. We do allow people outside of the parish to foster, but they would have to foster an animal that's already fixed. It's great when people show up and foster, but I think last year we put out like 75. Anytime you put out a number like that, we know all of them aren't coming back, so we don't want to lose intact animals into the foster system, because that could potentially cause an issue down the line somewhere else. Boja has enough animals, they don't need us contributing to their problems and things like that, so that's why we do it that way.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Catherine. Commissioner Atkins?
Mr. Clark?
Oh.
Director Clark, thank you. You made reference to bedding, dry bedding, and other supplies. Do you have all the supplies you need? Are we prepared to take care of any additional dogs that may come in?
Yes, sir.
We've got sufficient resources?
Yes, we have tarps, we have plenty of bedding. Of course, we take donations year-round for blankets and things like that. We can't really utilize sheets, because they're easy to tear up, so we don't want animals getting impacted by those or anything like that.
Okay, well, let us know if you need anything else. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you Commissioner Atkins. Okay, so if that's all the discussion under Administrator's report, we'll move on to communique's, where Commissioners can talk about anything they like. Anyone want to be on the board? Commissioner Blake?
Thank you. I would like to congratulate Mike Johnson for, once again, being voted in as the Speaker of the House. It's a great thing for the state of Louisiana, and I believe our nation as a whole. And he went to Captain... He graduated from Captain Shreve, which is in my district, and pretty cool and exciting, so I wanted to say congratulations, sir.
Thank you Commissioner Blake. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have someone from Public Works, please. What's going on, Josh?
Commissioner.
I'd like to get together with the Administration and you all. I know Woodland Tears is not parish property, but I would like for us to try to come up with a plan of action to eliminate the dumping over there. It is tragic. And this is not stuff that they've put out of apartments from people who have moved out, that we've already kind of gone through that. Obviously, it's an abandoned property, but people are using it as an opportunity to go dump whatever they, you know, don't want at their homes over at Woodland Tears. And I'm of the belief that some of these folks don't even live in Cedar Grove, and they're coming to Cedar Grove to dump their trash. And I'm just not going to be able to deal with that, none whatsoever. And I'm telling y'all, excuse my French, I'm going to raise hell about it, because it's not fair to my community that people want to dump their trash there, because I know it wouldn't be allowed anywhere else. And I'm not blaming you all, not putting... I'm not saying it's your fault, obviously, but I'm asking you to help me from my standpoint as a parish commissioner, to work with the city of Shreveport so we can get this done. I'm going to reach out to them, but I'd like for you all to do it as well. I want to go through the proper channels, to make sure that we can speak to whoever we need to speak with to figure this out, and whatever needs to be done, let's get it done as soon as possible, because it's becoming a breeding ground, and it's affecting the residents who have paid for their homes in their community, who want to live peacefully over there. And it's just not fair to some senior who's retired, that they got to look across the street at their trash while they're trying to keep their home clean. And they're constantly having to clean up, you know, around their homes because of the debris that's coming over from Woodland Tears. And this may be happening in other districts, I'm not sure. I can only speak for where I live, and it's bad. If you haven't seen it, drive by there. I think that's Union, that you can go down, that side is really bad. And so y'all work with me on that as much as you can, and let's try to get together on a day, you know, that we can kind of power, it could be over the phone, email, or whatever we need to do, but let's try to do something as soon as we can, so I can update my constituents on what we're trying to do to alleviate that problem.
Right. Definitely, I mean, I understand it's an issue. We'll get with the city of Shreveport and you. We can have a meeting set up, and maybe something they can do, you know, to a first. And I know we have some, you know, dedicated funding issues and stuff, but we'll work with them however we need to, to try to help out this.
And I even thought about maybe involving Shreveport Green as well to try to do a cleanup. Initially, if we got to go over there with some dumpsters, I don't mind getting my hands dirty, getting out there, throwing that stuff away, and, you know, documenting that we have taken care of their property and made sure that it was clean. And that way, we can kind of maybe try to track when trash is being dumped over there, you know, and I've asked the citizens to, if they see someone pulling up over there dumping trash, to call me, because they may have a pattern of behavior. They may come around a certain time when they think no one's looking, and, you know, we may be able to work with Cedar Shreveport and the Police Department and property standards. That way, someone could be on the lookout for it. But I just want to get that cleaned up, so we can... Cedar Grove's a beautiful place, and I want it to stay that way.
Absolutely. We'll just have a meeting, like I said, with the city of Shreveport, and we'll see what we can get done.
I appreciate y'all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you Commissioner Jones. It's an important issue in many districts. Commissioner Catherine, you're next.
Yes, I would just kind of like to expand on what Commissioner Jones just talked about. Pines... Not Pines, yeah. Pines Apartment, same thing. People are still going in and out of there. I am yet to understand certain things. We have two governmental agencies, the parish and the city, and both of those places, all those places are still standing. I don't know the rules and regulations, I don't know the laws, I don't know any of that, but I do know this, they need to come down very expediently, and whatever we can do as a parish entity, we need to do that as well. Because the thing is, someone is going to get hurt, harmed, or killed up in those apartments as well. Law enforcement is doing everything they can. Property standards have done everything they're supposed to do. And the thing about it, as fast as property standards pick up, you could go back two days later and doesn't even look like they've even been there, which is really unfortunate. Also, I would just like to share also about the lighting in the city, and I have been in contact with SWEPCO. Any citizen within the parish, within the city, if your lighting is out, contact someone. I just recently went by elderly person's house the other night, just unbeknown to me, and both of their lights were out. I mean, it's totally black in the area, but I have called SWEPCO since that time to see what they can do in a more expedient way. And lastly, I will be having a meeting with law enforcement within the next couple of weeks. I've asked the sheriff, I've asked Shreveport Police Department, and also the Jefferson as well, to be there, so we could talk about some of these guns going off all times of the day, all times of the night. And some of the citizens, some of the constituents in the areas of particularly Eden Garden, Cedar Grove, and Spring Lake have asked, what can they do to assist law enforcement? Because I do know this, when my ring go off, it tells me exactly where a gun was fired, okay? And I, just like everybody else, need to hook up with that, whatever they call that center, and get it straight to them as quick as possible, so law enforcement could be on it. The thing is, what we have to look at and what we have to realize, everybody in this city, everybody in this parish, has a responsibility to do something. And the thing is, again, some can do more than others, I got that, okay? But the most important thing, if we all attempt to do the best that we can, I promise you, this place do not have to look the way that it does. Thank you very much.
Thank you Commissioner Catherine. Commissioner Atkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Bryant, Ms. Frazier, I understand that there was a long-range planning meeting today to discuss the Red River Expressway. Forgive me, I still think of this as the Tim James Project, so when I hear Red River Expressway, I don't connect the dots, but could... And I know this is on the agenda for later, but could you all please email me the proposed changes to the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement, so I can see what's going on and be informed on this? Thank you. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you Commissioner Atkins. In that meeting, I'll just share, I was in attendance at that meeting. We discussed some changes that would give fewer obligations for maintenance and ownership to the parish of the access road, and also we decided to postpone any votes on it until two weeks, so that we could all review the documents that you just requested.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. President. I did just want to speak, my last comment as Sheriff of Animal Services, I did just want to remind our citizens that we do have guidelines in place outside of a winter weather event regarding leaving your animals and your pets outside. However, it's very critical that you do bring your pets inside, that you do provide some level of warmth for them right now. This is said to be a... Has been upgraded as a winter weather alert right now, so please be mindful of that. Also, I don't know if you plan to do so, Mr. President, just wanted to recognize and welcome our State Representative, Ms. Darrell Jordan Walters, who's entered. Just wanted to say thank you and Happy New Year for joining us. Other than that, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you Commissioner Thomas, and welcome Ms. Walters. Nice to see you. Thank you for being here. Commissioner Burrell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Happy New Year to everybody. Since we own this trash business, there's accumulation of trash and debris that flows behind my house, that drains from Queensborough and Country Club Arena, no, Country Club Communities. It drains through the spillway, I call it spillway, the big ditch, that used to be navigable, that flows right behind my house, along properties that are there that have both wars, because it used to be navigable. I asked Madam Administrator if she would pass the information on to our attorney to get me the state statue on navigable stream, and I know she sent it at one time. And I requested it again, because I couldn't find mine, so I requested it again. So... And hope that we can get that cleaned up. I have a particular problem, because there's a drainage pipe that runs between my house and my neighbor's house. It's a large pipe that dumps all the silt from the street behind my house. It builds up a earth and berm, and all the trash stops at my house, instead of flowing on out into Caddo. My only relief is, whenever we have high water, the trash will pass my house and go on out to Cross Lake. That's the only relief I have. But other than that, it stops there, and it's like that throughout the year. So I appreciate somebody take a look at it and hopefully get that legislation to me, see if we can do something.
Thank you Commissioner Burrell. I would like to ask our Administration to maybe start some preliminary talks with Shreveport Green about doing another round of the style of cooperative cleanup that we've done before, in I think the Cherokee Park area, but it sounds like we have several areas that would be nice to...
Yes, sir. We will work with them for cleanup. We will also meet with the city. It's the... The recurrence is the problem. We can clean up, but we have to stop the folks from continuing to put these items out. So we're going to work with the city to see where the parish might can help assist with this issue.
Thank you. Commissioner Catherine, second time.
I do apologize, but I did not want to forget those that are with our homes during this weather. I saw an email of some sort, someone, I want to say it was an officer that's located downtown that was asking for blankets and socks and things of this nature. And if we could get that to the general public, please do, because the thing is, we got to do what we can to keep people alive and go from there. However they end up where they are, that's none of my business, okay? But the thing is, again, I know what the word said, and it said, "For the least of them," and that's what we need to be very concerned with at this particular time. If you have blankets, if you have socks, if you have gloves, if you have whatever, I promise you, if you've never been out in the woods for a long period of time, it would be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Catherine. Commissioner Jones, second time.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner Catherine took my sermon from it, so they saved you today, Ms. Glover. I won't be preaching, but nevertheless, to the constituents of Caddo, you do not have to wait for Shreveport Green and Caddo Parish to put an event together to start picking up litter. If you go to your local library nearby, Keep Louisiana Beautiful has a program that has provided litter kits that you can rent, just like a library book. You go by and you pick it up, you can form your own cleanup day with your neighbors on your street, borrow the material, and all they ask is that you just wipe it down and sanitize it, and they even provide the sanitation wipes for you to wipe it down before you bring it back in. They give you vests, protective vests, so that you can be seen while you're out there on the street to clean up. So although we're going to do what we can as a body to try to alleviate this problem, we've already declared a war on litter as a parish, nevertheless, as constituents and citizens of Caddo Parish, it's our own... It's our responsibility to take care of where we live, so we don't have to wait for other people to kind of get the fire going. We can do it as well. So if you wanted to know where you can pick up that type of stuff, you don't have to go buy anything from Home Depot, go by your local library, and they will provide the things that you need, the materials that you need to start your own litter pickup. And so just wanted to put that out there, just in case people weren't aware of that, that you can go get those materials from any local library. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Jones, excellent information to share. That's all our communique's for now. We'll move on to President's Report. I'll make a short report today. This is supposed to be my last meeting all the way through. As your president, we should have an election next meeting. We should also have a lot of snow and ice on Thursday, possibly before our next meeting, so it's not impossible that there will be a weather-related constitutional crisis in our officer class here. And so we'll just, I hope all stay tuned for when the rescheduling of that meeting might occur. It's not clear yet. And also, I was just informed that there is an Emergency Operations Center meeting coming up. Is it Wednesday? Right before the storm. I'm supposed to go, and our Vice President hopefully will go, and any other Commissioner may attend to learn what that center is like, and, you know, be ready to share the information that's shared there with your constituents as you choose. So, and I hope everyone will stay safe in the cold weather. Thank you. Okay, we have no old business.
Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Do we have old business?
Commissioner Thomas was trying to...
Oh, Commissioner Thomas?
Hit your attention.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I did just want to ask the public to please keep our Vice President in your prayers, her and her family, in our absence for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's all keep Commissioner... Erica, do you know what time that meeting is?
We are still working out. They gave a time, but we may have to change that time, because the state's having a meeting that could conflict with that. So as soon as we have that exact time, we'll let you know.
Will you text me, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And before we move on, just to follow up on Commissioner Catherine's statement, I believe he was referencing an email from Hope Connections on Levy Street, which is the facility that's currently taking donations of certain items for unhoused people.
That's right, Hope Connections. Okay, that brings us to new business.
Right, and our first item today is to advance the introduction of Ordinance 6513 of 2025. That's an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the Capital Outlay Fund to change in appropriation from the construction and improvement of Greenway Water Lines to the construction of Dawson Road Extension.
I have a motion from Commissioner Epperson, second from Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Epperson?
It should... Excuse me. It should've been Greenwood Water Line. Excuse me. Got the effects of a cold. I've gone out and with the Public Works Department, and we looked at an alternative route to the Dawson Road Extension. We got... I spoke about it at our last meeting, and it'd be just to the west of the SWEPCO facility, which would not be a problem as far as security is concerned, as we saw it. And so I think these funds would take precedence now over getting that done relative to the Greenwood Water Project. And I ask for you to do a support on advancing this Thursday. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Catherine?
Yes, I just have a question about this particular ordinance. This includes the, what word am I trying to say? The feasibility study is here. In addition to this Dawson Road Extension, that's the same road we talked about last time? I forget the name of it last time.
That's correct, Dawson Road Extension, we talked about in the last meeting. And this is to start a feasibility study.
Okay. So we're not talking about actually approving the road at this point? We're talking about actually doing a feasibility study first?
That's correct, going through the proper.
Before we do anything else?
Yes.
Cool.
Okay. May, I would like to ask you a question also, Mr. Epperson. Is the feasibility study going to cost $750,000 or hopefully not that much?
No, not that much. We just want to get, in the event, it could be right away acquisition things of that nature if it gets to that point.
Okay.
That's just some funds that was dedicated that we did not use and want, thought to be best served to be put here at this point in time.
Okay.
Not COVID, Mr. Burrell. I went to the VA.
I'm far enough away, don't worry about that part.
I don't know.
The rest of you all need to be.
Okay, so, oh, Commissioner Crack.
Yeah, just real quick, is this, so this Dawson Road is separate and apart from the AEP facility that we were talking about last month? I'd like to direct the question there.
Commissioner Epperson, would you answer that, please?
Yeah, Dawson Road, go, it starts at Jefferson Page and goes south until it dead ends.
So this is separate and apart?
Right, we, we're just going to veer off completely west of the AEP SREP Co facility.
Okay, so this would be in lieu of finishing that road?
That road is already complete.
Well, other than making it a through road. I know, I know originally you were asking AEP to make that a through road.
Right.
Or, or making it open to the public, is this in lieu of that?
Yes, this goes, this veers off a resilient way. Completely different, and ties into Dawson Road.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. A point of clarification, is this, the 750,000 that we're talking about that, that was originally associated with the Greenwood Water Lines, is this excess funds that were not used to develop the Greenwood Water Lines? Or, or is it in lieu of developing Greenwood Water Lines?
That's in lieu of developing the Greenwood Water Lines. They did not accept the terms and conditions of that.
Okay, so that, so those funds have been, Greenwood did not accept the terms and conditions of our cooperative endeavor agreement, so they basically put those funds back into the parish budget for reallocation to something else?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Blake?
Thank you, sir. I'd like to ask administration, what is your thoughts on us moving forward with us?
Commissioners, this is just to start the process of doing a feasibility study. We would have to get the information back on the road and have the data before I can give any opinion about the road itself, and this is what this is doing, starting that process to be able to provide you all information, so that you have that information as you decide what additional funding you would put towards the road. Any funding that's left would go towards this project, should you continue forward.
Okay. Is that all, Commissioner Blake?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, it looks like that's all of the discussion. We can vote.
And that motion does carry with five in support, four in opposition, and three absent to advance the item. That brings us to 11.2, which is advancing Resolution 1 of 2025. That's a resolution to authorize the Caddo Parish Administrator, Administrator to execute the extensions of the primary term.
I have a motion from Commissioner Epperson, second from Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Epperson?
Question, administration, a notice in the fact sheet states, get about, what, 56,000 for the, a year, for that two-year period of time, and that will go in the oil and gas fund?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? We can vote.
Commissioner John Paul Young, thank you. And that motion carries with nine in support, none in opposition, and three absent. That brings us to, considering advancing Resolution 2 of 2025, a resolution to relocate the polling place for precinct 309 from Shreveport City Baptist Church at 2810 Knight Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, to Valencia Park at 1800 Viking Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101, and otherwise provide with respect.
Motion from Commissioner Thomas, second from Commissioner Crackman. Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is regarding the voters in that, in that precinct. Shreve City Baptist Church did close, so therefore that polling location will move to 1800 Viking Drive, which is the, the SPAR facility over there, and so it would consolidate all of those, those precincts to vote in that one location.
All right. No more discussion? We can vote.
And that motion carries with ten in support, none in opposition, and two absent, and brings us to the next item, which is to consider advancing Resolution Number 3 of 2025, a resolution authorizing the Caddo Community Action Agency to administer the Head Start Program for the Parish of Caddo and otherwise provide with respect.
Motion from Commissioner Jones, second from Commissioner Epperson. Commissioner Jones?
What, sir?
No discussion? I'll just say that I did not see any repetitive language in this resolution. And we also do this every year, isn't that correct, Ms. Bryant?
That's correct. Commissioners, this is our Head Start Program, this, the parish receives a grant for. We are simply identifying CCWA as the agency that we will use to administer those Head Start Funds. That is the only, that's the only Head Start Program in Caddo Parish that we administer. So this is just something, they have been running this program for 49 years, and we haven't had any issues, so we'd like to continue that partnership.
Will this be their 50th year? Or just 49?
I think this is their 49, but we'll.
I believe it's 50th, actually.
50th, well, we'll look at that and see whether it's not.
Somebody may have lost count of a year.
Mr. Clerk, will you do a special resolution honoring their 50th anniversary of Head Start, please?
I will, I will find out, and we'll draft one up either way.
Right. Okay, Commissioner Atkins, on the board?
I was just going to concur with the, with Ms. Britt Bryant. For my nine-plus years on the commission, the. Caddo Community Action Agency has been overseeing the program, and they've always done a good job and are highly regarded, so I think, I certainly feel comfortable voting to move forward with them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Perhaps you'll co-sponsor that resolution with me. Commissioner Burrell?
Yeah, I heard earlier that there's some question about the language, what we need, do we need to proofread it again, or do we need to stick it in AI and let them rewrite it?
It looks fine to me.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Epperson?
Ms. Bryant, I, just for clarification, okay, Caddo Community Action Agency really started off in 65. I think we had three employees, they call it CAPCAP, three employees and I think $30,000. So I would say from 65 to 2025, that's 60 years, isn't it?
Yeah, we're pretty close.
That's 60 years. Thank you.
Yes, sir, we'll acknowledge 60 years, and then how long they've worked with the program with us.
Okay, that's all our comments. We can vote.
And Commissioner Jones, who's returning to his station now. And that motion carries with ten in support, none in opposition, and two absent, brings us now to consideration of advancing Resolution Number 4, a resolution approving the amended 2024 and proposed 2025 budgets of the North Louisiana Criminalistics Laboratory Commission and otherwise provide with respect.
Motion from Commissioner Jones, second from Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Jones?
What, sir?
No discussion. I don't see the, is the budget on here?
It should be attached as Exhibit 1.
Okay, yeah, it's sideways.
Mr. President, I did try to join, join the board, but.
Oh, Commissioner Atkins, I see you there.
As with last year, this budget is a, is.
A million dollars in the hole.
Yes, is, is not balanced by a significant amount. Now, apparently last year, they were able to get some emergency funding to close the gap, but as with last year, I have a problem voting for a budget that doesn't balance. So for that reason, I'll be voting no. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Administrator Bryant, is there, is there any insight that you can share about this? Have you had any information we don't have?
You know, I will say, by the State Budget Act, balance means that you don't have an ending negative fund balance. I understand Commissioner Atkins saying is they're going in the hole by $900,000 and using their fund balance, but in accordance with state law, if you have available fund balance, that is considered a balanced budget, but it is concerning that they are having to use the fund balance to survive. I will say that once you're out of fund balance, you have to live with what you bring in. So that is an issue right now. They have about two years, based on this budget, they have about two years of fund balance. And so that would either take the agencies that are serving, that they are serving, and the state to be able to support these expenses, should additional revenue not come available, because they are, most of their activities are on behalf of other agencies.
Is there a deadline for approving this budget?
There is. It's included in the attached letter on the exhibit, and just as a reminder, and particularly helpful to those who, this may be your first time, these crime labs are structured in an unusual way. They are funded with court costs that have been diminishing because of out-of-court settlements that tend to happen more often than they did when they were, when the funding mechanism was established. And so they have come to give us presentations about that in the past. They are also set up, the crime labs are set up to operate over a set area, and so this crime lab covers much more than Caddo. Caddo does produce the bulk of its work, but it has a lot of other parishes that are included under it, nine parishes, I believe. And so this Budget Act has to be approved by the majority of those parishes. In the past, you have both voted to support it or deny it, and, you know, they just have to add that in with the other responses they get from all nine parishes, and if a majority of their parishes support it, they're, they're okay. So, you know, should you choose to want to not advance, you know, not support the budget, it would not stop their operations necessarily unless a majority of others did as well.
I don't see the deadline in the two documents associated with this.
Okay, if it's not attached, I'm sorry.
I see January 9th is the day we expect to vote on it finally, if we send it forward today, and then December 13th is the day they put out their budget.
It may have been in an attached email, then. I'll find that deadline and let y'all know, but it is.
Because we have a, we have a whole committee that we formed to discuss this issue, and my recollection was that Caddo Parish, although we paid a lot, did not pay our fair share of the work that they do for the people who get in trouble in Caddo Parish.
I'm not going to say that.
Did not pay as much as they would like for us to pay.
But they would like the agencies that use the facility to pay more. We're not required by law to pay more than what we are paying, but I will say the commission has appropriated additional dollars for this agency. Far as the deadline, the State Budget Act requires that you adopt your budget before the beginning of the next fiscal year. So they technically, I don't know if that doesn't apply to them, but that's how it is for Caddo Parish. You're required to adopt your budget prior to the beginning of the, of the fiscal year. I don't know if they have already gotten what they need, but they are already, they need the budget adopted now.
It is a different.
Is it a different?
It is a different requirement that this speaks to. I understand what you're saying, and, and great point, but, but this is a, a separate requirement that I believe is January 31st, but I'll double check that. It may even be February.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll let y'all know. I'll find it.
I'd like to make a substitute motion as the chair to send this item to the Public Safety Committee for discussion and invite Mr. Jones to comment, speak.
Since this is in my district, I'd like to say.
Sure. So there's a motion and a second. Commissioner Burrell, would you like to speak?
Yes, I would. Since this is in my district, since this is in my district, I'd like to request the administration to get an, to ask, I'm not sure who's the director.
Mr. Jones, Dr. Jones?
Dr. Jones, come and give another update on this by Thursday.
Okay, so we'll invite him on Thursday, although, you know, this week, the weather may prevent a lot of that stuff, but.
By our next meeting.
Yes, he can, and we'll certainly invite him to this committee meeting, which I believe Commissioner Epperson chairs at present at least.
Yes, sir, we'll get in contact with him, the director, to be here whenever you all, we can meet.
Okay, this could be one of the items we can discuss with the chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell.
Thank you.
The other two comments on the board, do you still wish to speak? Commissioner Cothran?
Yeah, I just, my question is, this has been an ongoing issue, and my thing is, what can we do? We've given additional monies in some cases, I know that, and what can we do, maybe even in talking with the state to stop this bleeding? Because again, if you're just talking about two years from now, that's, I mean, that's tomorrow, when you're talking about dollars and cents. And the thing about it is that it just can't keep happening, and we just can't keep giving money, 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 money. I mean, we're putting a Band-Aid on it right now, and we have to do something that's going to either pump the brakes on this thing, we got a state rep right here that maybe, if she's in town, could come to the committee as well to listen to what we're talking about, and might be able to take it down to Baton Rouge for us as well, to assist in any way possible, because again, we know this facility is needed. We know that, that's a given, nobody's saying go away. But in the same breath, what we're saying is that we just can't keep doing this, and I understand the other parishes and things of this nature, they might not want to pay, but it's like anything else, you got to pay to play. It's simple. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cothran. I agree. Commissioner Atkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. To Commissioner Cothran's point, they just, we just can't continue to do the same thing over and over here, and what really bothers me about this budget is that there's been no effort to reduce the expenditures. You know, I understand that maybe it would take a while to get there, but to my knowledge, there's been, there's no evidence on the budget that any effort has been made to reduce expenditures. I don't know what kind of effort has been made to reduce, to increase revenue, other than lobbying the state legislature for emergency funding, but that's no way to go through, through life. So for that reason, you know, I have concerns with approving the budget. Secondly, from my knowledge, we talked about Dr. Jones, is that, is that the executive director of?
Yes, he's the person who's come and spoken to us before.
Okay, I just didn't know if which Dr. Jones we might be talking, I didn't know if like Dr. Timothy Jones might have been the chairman of the board or something. I was just trying to get clarity on which Dr. Jones we were talking about.
His name is Joseph Jones.
Joseph Jones, thank you.
That would be me, Commissioner Atkins.
Pardon me?
And it's not Stefan Jones either. Yes, okay, so one, one more question. Attorney Frazier, maybe you remember, was there a bill in the state about funding crime labs this year? Bill in the state legislature? I don't know what came of it. I remember seeing something.
I don't recall there being one, but we will take a look and give you the results.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Burrell?
Thank you.
Did you already?
No.
Go ahead.
Again, Madam Administrator, this, this issue has come up several times, and there's always a deficit, but I hear you say fund balance. I've never heard us discussing them having a fund balance before. Where is that coming from?
That's, that's money that they've accumulated when they had better years, and that's what the purpose of the fund balance is, you try to have a savings available should you have revenue shortfalls, so that you can use that fund balance during those times.
I know, I, I know what, what we normally use it for, but since they've been running a deficit, and they've been coming to us to ask for money, why wasn't the fund balance used then or to the state?
No, they, they've used fund balance in prior years, that's why it's down to, to me, and when they approve, when you approved the 2024 budget, if you look at this, they were proposing to use 1.2 million dollars in fund balance, however. However, they end up having a, an excess based on amended budget. And if you look at the budget, they also are projecting nearly $700,000 decrease in expenses from '24 to '25. So the budget is just a projection. And right now, they're saying if we had the budget at this level without additional monies, we would go in the hole $900,000. What happened in 2024, they were able to get $1.5 million.
So they was doing that to save their fund balance then?
Yeah, so they got, they, because you, they don't want to draw it down. And we'll allow the director to address these issues. They don't want to draw it down to a level that's not manageable. They were able to get, looks like, emergency funding of $1.5 million. So with that, they then were able to retain their fund balance. But prior to that, they were projecting to use $1.2 million of it when, when they approved the 2024 budget. But they were able to get a $1.5 million emergency relief funding. And that's what helped them for 2024. They are not projecting that for 2025, hence why they're saying they're gonna go in the hole. I would suspect that they're gonna ask for that same type of emergency release fund, relief funding, but that's a case a year-by-year basis. The state may or may not give it to them again.
Well, I remember us asking them to, well, to come back and, and tell us how the other 29 parishes was going to participate in this on a pro rata share, hopefully. And I don't think we have, I don't remember ever getting that information.
You know, the, the issue is none of those parishes are obligated or required by law.
Yeah.
And so that's part of their issue. They sent out a list asking the parishes to contribute more. They're not required to, so, but we will tell him, ask him when he comes to present information how have other agencies provided additional funding.
And as I remember, to the state legislation, concerning this have, I have the language of "may" in there and not "shall." And I think that was the issue that we were running into.
But when you look at their projections, they're...
Madam legislator, that, that may be something.
Representative Walters?
Madam legislator.
We're not, we're not asking, we're not asking you to tell us what you're gonna do.
I was just making a comment that in the legislation that, that governs this, it has "may" in there instead of "shall," and which allows the parishes to opt out of it. Those parishes that could possibly participate. So maybe you might want to look at that legislation. Thank you.
And Commissioner Burrell, we'll tell you, when you look at a comparison, their revenues to revenues, and none of them are really projecting an increase. So they're not collecting additional revenues. The only, a lot of what they receive was the, the one-time emergency relief is what has helped them.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Cothran, third time?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess the more I listen to this, the more confused I get. And the thing about it is that if I understand this process correct, they take evidence, they go through it, they do whatever they do. And to assist in the law enforcement arena... But then, if I'm hearing this correctly, law enforcement arena is saying, "I'm not gonna pay you. I just want you to work." If, if I'm hearing it properly. And, and I know I'm making it very kind of simplistic. I understand that. But that's, that's what I'm hearing right now. And, and the point being again, is that the most important thing we have to remember, if they're going to have a crime lab, what would, what would happen if they said, "We're not gonna do your people anymore. We're not gonna do your tests anymore?"
I don't know. I, I think that they would have to answer that. But do understand that Caddo Parish is the largest user of this crime lab. And the district attorney's office, who we have to fund their reasonable cost if they needed to use this crime lab. So I don't know that it's necessarily that you're talking about a million dollars. And, and right now, Caddo Parish is not in a position to say, "We would pay a million dollars a year toward this endeavor." A million dollars that's growing. So I think that we allow Mr. Jones to come and have this discussion with y'all since he is the person that can provide you the, the information and answer the questions that you're asking. What is, what, how do other agencies, what feedback are you getting? What, what happens if you don't get additional revenues? What is the state telling you? I think those are questions that we have to wait for him to be able to provide that information. We will also request that going forward, when they put their budget on the agenda, they should be here to address these questions at that time.
Yeah, and please understand, I'm not saying, "Crime lab, don't do, don't do your job." But what I am saying, once again, keeping it very simple, because that's who I am, particularly when it comes to things of this nature. I promise you, I can't go to any company in Shreveport and purchase something and walk out the door with it without going to jail. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Cothran. I would like to point out that the best way, the best forum for discussing this is in the Public Safety Committee meeting that I have requested and request that we go ahead and vote on sending it to that committee.
And that is the motion that you have before you right now?
That is the substitute motion on the table. Is that all right?
Yes.
Okay, let's vote.
And that motion carries with nine in support, one in opposition, and two absent. So that item will be scheduled for a Public Safety Committee upcoming agenda. And that brings us now to...
Right, so there are special resolutions, 11.6, 11.7, 11.8, 11.9, 11.10, and 11.11. Chair moves to englobo and advance.
There's also the one that y'all added, which I have listed...
And the two agenda additions for the other two principles.
Yes, which is, I have them both listed under one item as 11.17, if you like.
And 11.17. All right. So we can vote on advancing those special resolutions?
And that motion carries with ten in support, none in opposition, and two absent. And brings us to the consideration of advancing the appointment of Chris Davis to the Human Services District of Louisiana.
Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner Cothran.
If I may, I was just, you know, even though we advanced it already, I just wanted to share on 11.7, this young lady, Destiny Morton, was a member of the Jaw Corps. And the reason she received this is because myself and Commissioner Burrell presented it to her because she got selected to actually go to Walt Disney dietary program. I mean, she got selected to physically go down there. And that's rare.
Great.
Okay, it's very few young kids get a chance to do that.
Well, we can, we can discuss it and praise her more publicly when it comes up for a final vote. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to 11.12, advance the appointment of Chris Davis. Do I have a motion? Okay, motion by Commissioner Efferson, second by the chair. We can vote. Oh, do you wish to speak, Commissioner Efferson? You want to? You want to englobo all the way through?
Yes.
Okay, so there is a motion to englobo and advance 11.2, 11.12, 11.13, 11.14, 11.15, and 11.16. Oh, leave off 11.16, please. Okay, just to 11.15. I'm sorry, what? Okay, well, we'll leave off 15 as well. Okay, so 11.12 to 11.14. Okay, please ask your question.
It says unexpired term?
Yes. My understanding is that the current occupant of that seat is unable to participate in meetings because of legal entanglements.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
Is that your understanding, Mr. Clerk?
That's correct.
Okay, so we can vote? Okay, now we have 11.15 and 11.16 still to consider.
So 11.15 is to advance consideration of establishing a sales tax within the boundaries of I-49 North Corridor Economic Development District in connection with the pilot agreement with Edgemont Holdings. This was discussed today in a long-range planning committee meeting. And, and a recommendation to the commission to adopt this was made. There were a number of documents that were provided to go along with it. We will upload those for access to the public now that we have them.
Okay, is there any motion? Commissioner Atkins, do you wish to speak?
Could, could someone who participated in the committee member meeting who was a member of that committee?
I would be happy to tell you what happened in the meeting on this topic, unless, would you rather? Commissioner Crackman? Okay, so in that topic, there is a travel center that was built on I-49 near the town of Houston. The owner of the travel center built the public utilities, the road, even fiber optic that go to service that site and also enable the townspeople to visit it and shop. And we agreed already by law in a pilot that we would reimburse him through the pilot for some of those costs. That, that property tax pilot has already been made a law, and it would reimburse him at the end of 2035. If we also approve a 2%, his request is a 2% increase that he can charge on sales tax there, he would be reimbursed five years earlier at the end of 2030. And the committee voted three to one, was it three to one? Three to one to approve the double tax incentive or rebate reimbursement for him of the pilots for property taxes and for sales taxes so that he could be reimbursed by 2030. Commissioner Crackman opposed that because of the rise in the taxes for the people of Houston who have very few other options for shopping. Is that, is that fair? Okay. Questions?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so there's a motion from Commissioner Thomas, second by the chair. Any discussion? Commissioner Crackman?
Yeah, this, this truck stop that's already been constructed and is very successful, this will impose a sales tax on the only outlet that those citizens of Houston have from anywhere from 30 to 45 minutes any direction of them. It's the only place that they have to really go and buy any goods other than, you know, heading south to Blanchard. I have to oppose this, you know, I think it's a, what is it, a 2% or 3% increase? And it's a 2% increase in the sales tax on all of the goods and services there. I can't appreciate that for the people of Houston. If they needed a tax break to build the truck stop, perhaps they shouldn't have built it. It's already been built, it's done, and it's very successful. He told us their, their annual income at that truck stop, and it's, it's pretty outlandish if I remember correctly. So I have to oppose this just for the people of Houston. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Crackman. Commissioner Atkins?
Just a clarifying point. Is there a pilot in place at all right now?
Yes, the property tax pilot will pay him back at the end of 2035.
Okay, so I just wanted to, so there is a property tax pilot in place? And he's wanting to add...
The sales tax pilot.
An increase to the sales tax.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Cothran?
So if we were to vote for this, if I understood it correctly, we're just helping him recover his money five years earlier?
Yes. Administrator Bryant, would you like to add?
And also putting the property back on the tax rolls for him to actually pay property taxes five years early. Right now, it's in a pilot, so they're not paying on the value of the facility. So that would allow this property to be back on the rolls in order to pay property taxes. And the sales taxes would only be at this location. The owner did actually, this would not be the full investment. The owner did make investment at the parish. He's only recouping a portion of the investment, not the entire investment.
So it's an eight-acre facility. It's entirely an economic development district that we govern. This commission governs. And the value of the thing that he built, the truck stop, is $13 million. And it will be taxable in the normal way in 2030 if we approve the sales tax increase, which create, which is for the place that he built, which otherwise wouldn't exist if he hadn't built it. So that's, that's all I know about it. Do you, do you wish to speak more, Commissioner Cothran?
No.
Commissioner Atkins?
Sorry.
You're back on the board?
No, I'm not back.
Okay. Well, so there's a motion on the table. We can vote.
Commissioner Lazarus, is your...
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and that motion advance it, well?
Looks like it fails.
Fails. I'm sorry. It does. It fails with five in support, five in opposition, and two absent.
Okay, that brings us to 11.16.
Advancing consideration?
So our, our chair moves to postpone this item until, is it the 21st? Did we decide we would have another committee meeting on it?
21st at 2:00 PM. I mean, at 1:00 PM.
Yes, so I moved to postpone. Okay. So there's a motion and a second. I'll explain briefly. We talked about this a bit with the Tim James Company representatives, their counsel. And we didn't have early enough access to the documents to consider them and read through them. Those documents are all available now. There are some changes they want to make in their cooperative endeavor agreement. And we decided we would postpone that for another committee meeting. And so it seems appropriate to postpone this vote as well.
And that means 1:00 PM on the 21st?
Correct. And I think it is in either your district or also in Commissioner Blake's district. Okay, it's in, it's in District 9.
Borders my district.
Great. Okay, we can vote?
Commissioner Lazarus? Okay, that motion carries with ten in support, none in opposition, and two absent.
All right, that brings us to communicate a second time. Anyone want to get on the board?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to share this information with you all. On January 27th at 12:00 PM, the Baptist Ministers Fellowship Conference of Greater Shreveport is hosting a citywide Day of Prayer. Dr. Timothy Jones asked me to share this with everyone. If you can, take your lunch break that day. It's just a day for us to come together as a city. Be really good to have as many elected officials as we can there to show that, you know, at the end of the day, you know, despite our political differences, that we can come together and pray for our city and our parish. And so it's gonna be at Peace and Rest Baptist Church, 8200 St. Vincent Avenue in Shreveport. That's on January the 27th at 12:00 PM. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Blake, you're next.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to remind everyone that we are in the midst of flu season and that right now, the state, we're leading the country in flu cases. And so just be aware of how you're feeling and go to the doctor as soon as you can to get whatever help you might need. The Louisiana Department of Transportation has announced a road closure for this coming Saturday, January 11th, from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM at 523 Line Avenue near 3132 for the Railroad Union Pacific to perform maintenance on the railroad crossing. So please be aware of that. And then I recently, it's been an ongoing issue, but recently I've had, I've been inundated with phone calls, text messages, and people concerned about our water issues. And so I just wanted to let my constituents know that I'm meeting with the Water Sewage Department on January the 28th just to get information, to update the community on what's going on. I do know that there was a late algae bloom right before the holidays. So in my district, it caused odors again and discoloration. But the water should be safe to use and to drink. But I'm going to try to get more information and share it with everyone. And I do want to announce, this is important, that the House and the Senate and the Vice President have certified the election of our new president and Vice President. We'd like to keep all of our elected officials and our law enforcement and military in our prayers that we have seen with issues like what happened in NOLA on the New Year's Eve. prayers, that we have seen with issues like what happened in NOLA on the New Year's Eve, the endangerment to us on a daily basis in our country. So please keep everyone in our prayers, but congratulations. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Blake. Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. President. I did want to say, in keeping with that today, I'm also pleased to remember, and I hope that this is a testament to all of our American citizens, that today was a sign of a peaceful transfer of power. Congratulations to everyone that was certified on today. This is the way that our forefathers envisioned for this peaceful process to go, and I do hope that this peace will continue forward with the rest of the ceremonious procedures of this. I also wanted to, I have a question for my state representative, Representative Walters. Thank you so much. I do know that there was a lot of discussion regarding the state today, and I just wanted to allow you an opportunity. I know that you did have a, a comment regarding those things, and I just want you to address the public without it going over your head with you here present. So we don't always have, have the blessing of a presence, so we want to make sure you responded to that.
Thank you, thank you so much, Commissioner Thomas. Thank you first and foremost to the commission for all that you do, to make sure that our parish is better, safer, more vibrant. And so I wanted to add a little bit to the, the conversation. The last session that we had in legislature in November, it was a tax session, and so because of the adjustments that came out of that tax session, we are no longer projected to go into a deficit. Everything right now is showing that we will have a surplus in funding. So I wanted to encourage the parish, just to make sure that, you know, if you have capital outlay requests, et cetera, just make sure that those things come on down to us as soon as possible. And also, if anybody is listening from the crime lab itself, please make sure to apply for funding. Although the deadline has passed for this fiscal year in regards to non-governmental agencies applying for funding, again, I would still encourage the crime lab to apply. And then to also meet with Chair Debbie Vilio, who is the Chair of Criminal Justice. I am on criminal justice from this area, and as well as State Representative Doty Horton from Bossier City. And so again, thank you. If I can ever be of service, please let me know. And last but not least, because look, I see him with his shades on, Commissioner Efferson, I love your shades, and also I have your resolution. I brought it up from Baton Rouge. We are grateful for all that you have done to serve our country, and we don't take it lightly. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Representative Walters.
Thank you, thank you so much, Representative Walters. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Atkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was going to ask Commissioner Bryant or the clerk to please follow up on Representative Walters' suggestion that someone reach out to the, to the crime lab and make sure that they apply for some funding at the state. Because, believe it or not, not everybody watches our meetings, so we don't want them to miss it. So, but thank you for that, for that suggestion. Thank you, Mr. President.
We should get the Nielsen's ratings one day. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda and adjournments. Any motions? Oh, I'm sorry, citizens, comments, later rivals, are there any?
I don't see any.
No, okay, none, okay, great. Meeting is adjourned.
Stefan, where's the meeting?